Okay, good evening. I'd like to call-
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, we'll try it again. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM. Kevin, please rise and join me in the pledge to allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christina, can I have the roll call, please?
Chairman Adam Miller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey.
Present.
Commissioner David Leland. Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner Lauren McClellan.
Here.
Kara Kouser, alternate one.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to, um, do we have approval for the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
A motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Perrin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes passed five to zero. Okay, on to our first agenda item. Application number 22-166AAR Cypress Key Medical Center. The applicant Sinorama West Palm Beach on behalf of HIODT LLC is requesting architectural and aesthetic review for approval of a new master sign plan for a property located at 11917 Southern Boulevard. Middy, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the applicant, is the applicant present? Can you go to the podium, sir? And on this one, as he's getting to the podium, Commissioner McClellan has a voting conflict on this item, so she is going to step down. She's not going to participate or otherwise vote on this item. She's filled out Form 8B. Uh, she was a, this site was a previous job of her employer, so she's conflicted out. So she is leaving the dais as of 7:03. With that, I'll turn back to you, sir. Your name for the record?
Uh, Yul Strelig.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Can you raise your right hand for me and I'll swear you in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Middy. Josu, over to you.
Good evening, Chair. Josu Ledger for the record. The application before you is application number 22-166. The applicant is requesting our architecture and aesthetic review approval for a new master sign plan for the new medical professional office building within the Cypress Key Medical Center located at 11917 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the proposed north and south elevations as well as the maximum size and location of signage on the building. Staff is recommending approval of application number 22-166 as submitted. This concludes the presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Um, uh, Mr. Strelig, do you have a presentation or anything you'd like to say, sir?
I have a document sample letter. It doesn't match the exact font everybody used, but black reverse panel, white illumination, pretty much standard throughout South Palm Beach.
Very cool. Thank you, sir. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Perrin?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't have any questions. Just you have A through Z of those already made that you carry around?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Markey?
I have nothing.
Uh, Commissioner Cohen?
No, uh, comments or questions?
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone personally like to make any comments? Anyone online? Christina? Okay, great. Um, I'd like to close the, uh, close, close public comment. Um, and do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion, we approve application number 22-166.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cohen.
Howser.
Howser, sorry. Yeah, okay. It's the end of the school.
Sorry, it's changing.
Okay. Oh, congratulations. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it, board. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to application number 23-015AAR Crestwood Square Plaza. The applicant Color Restoration and Construction LLC is requesting architectural and aesthetic review for exterior painting of buildings for Crestwood Square Plaza for a locate, property located at 11935-211937 Southern Boulevard. Uh, Middy, over to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, we'll just let the record reflect that Commissioner McClellan is back on the dais at 7:06. Is the applicant here for 23-015?
He's not present, but I have him as an online attendee.
Can you un, unmute him?
Yes, I can.
And do you know who it is?
Yes, it's Edward. Edward Santiago, and I am unable to mute him.
Is he unmuted?
I just sent him a request to unmute.
Mr. Santiago, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, very good, sir. This is a quasi judicial hearing. I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand for me?
Yes.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item? Thank you.
Thank you, Middy. Uh, Josu, over to you, sir.
Yes. The application before you is 23-015. The applicant is requesting architectural and aesthetic review approval for the exterior painting of the building situated within the Crestwood Square Plaza. The applicant is proposing to use Benjamin Moore 968 and 1536 for the main body of the building. This slide illustrates before, currently as it exists, the current paint. This slide illustrates the proposed, um, facades with the new paint. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-015 as submitted. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Santiago, do you have anything you'd like to say or any presentation you'd like to make?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Uh, commissioners, um, Commissioner Kouser?
Uh, it looks very nice.
Thank you. Commissioner Markey?
I have no comment.
Uh, I agree. Looks, looks great. Like the improvement?
I don't, I don't, for me, it looks very nice.
No comment? Okay. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone in person? Anyone else online, Christina?
No one else online.
Great, thank you. I'd like to close the floor to public comment. And do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to pass application 23-015.
Motion made by Commissioner Perrin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Santiago. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to application number 23-037AAR Starbucks Southern Palm Crossing. The applicant IVT Southern Royal Palm Beach 1031 LLC is requesting architectural and aesthetic review for adjustments to a previously approved Starbucks that includes the addition of an awning and pedestrian gates to the outdoor seating area for a property located at 11001 Southern Boulevard. Middy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have an applicant here? Here comes somebody. Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Yep, uh, it's Liam Sargent with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, agent to the applicant.
Thank you, sir. As was stated before, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Could you raise your right hand for me and I'll swear you in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. And I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before you is 23-037. Applicant is requesting, um, architecture and aesthetic review approval for modifications to a previously approved Starbucks. That includes the addition of a canopy over the drive-through and a pedestrian gate to the outdoor seating area for Starbucks located within the Southern Palm Crossing, 11001 Southern Boulevard. Uh, this slide illustrates a close-up of, um, the actual, um, building within the, um, Southern Palm Crossing. This slide illustrates the elevations and proposed canopy over the drive-through highlighted in blue as well as the, um, proposed gate entry to the outdoor seating area. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-037 as submitted. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Sargent, do you have a presentation or anything to add?
Yeah, we've got a, a small presentation in case the board is curious what the awning is gonna look like. But other than that, that was succinct explanation. So in case, in case you're all curious, we're, we're, as, as you may be aware, we were here about a year ago before you today with the main approval for the, the Starbucks. And this constitutes really just a cleanup item on our end, keeping it consistent with how the building exists today. So the awning you see on your, on the screen here is what we're gonna be putting over the drive-through. And then similarly, for Starbucks safety standards, we're adding a, a second gate to the pedestrian, or the second pedestrian gate to the outdoor seating area. So that is the full amount of the changes that we're proposing. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, commissioners, Commissioner McClellan?
No, no questions.
No comments or questions?
Uh, last time you were here, you guys said the other Starbucks staying open until this one opens. Is that still true?
Still true.
Okay. People will be upset if there's no Starbucks there, so.
We're, we're keeping it open as long as we can.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Markey?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kouser?
No comments or questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone in the audience like to comment? Anyone online? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion, we approve application number 23-037.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey, second?
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Kouser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Uh, item passes five to zero. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, application number 23-038, SBMAR Royal Palm Beach Recreation Center. The applicant John Schmidt on behalf of the Village of Royal Palm Beach is requesting site plan and architectural approval for approximately 14,000 square foot addition to accommodate a new office, education exercise space, and various other site improvements to the existing recreation center for property located at 100 Sweet Bay Lane. Middy?
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Good evening, sir. Could you state your name for the record?
Nat Wojciechowski.
Thank you. Can you, I'll swear you in as well. Um, this is a quasi judicial hearing. I'm gonna swear in the village engineer as well. He's on his way. Other one. There we go. Thank you. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Thank you, Middy. Josu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before you is 23-037. The applicant is seeking a site renovation and architectural approval for approximately 14,000 square foot building construction and various other site improvements to the existing Royal Palm Beach Recreation Center situated on 57.95 acre parcel of land located at 100 Sweet Bay Lane.
The, uh, proposed improvement will accommodate a new pre-K education office space, a gymnasium, and various other site improvement as well as building improvement. Upgraded to landscaping around the buildings and, um, within other areas within the affected area is also proposed. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the proposed building addition and landscaping, which I will cover later within this presentation. This slide illustrates a site plan which emphasizes in the affected area. The proposed expansion highlighted in red does not constitute any significant impact to the neighboring properties. Access and parking to the center will remain the same. Overall, the proposed site plan is in conformance with the village requirements for the public ownership zoning district. As mentioned earlier, um, the applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the proposed building addition and landscaping. This slide illustrates the landscape plan which identifies upgraded landscaping around the building and throughout the affected area of the site. This slide illustrates the landscape plan, LP1. And this is LP2. This is moreover the, um, eastern portion parking lot, which is LP3. This slide illustrate the proposed elevation, color, sample, and materials. As shown here, the exterior of the proposed addition matches the materials and architectural features of the existing building. Staff requests recommendations of approval as submitted to village council regarding application number 23-038 SBMAR and resolution number 23-17 with an added condition for the public, the art in public places, the condition is as follow. The art in public places requirements in section 26-75.5 of the village code must be met. The public requirements for this project is 1% of the total vertical construction cost using a certified cost estimate equivalent to $15,987,582. The art installation shall be depicted in locations shown on the site plan and installed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. This concludes the presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Wojciechowski, um, do you have a presentation or anything?
I do not. That's, that's everything.
Thank you, sir. Uh, commissioners, Commissioner Kouser?
Yep.
Commissioner Markey?
Uh, I think it'd be a good improvement for the village.
I agree. It's great that we're expanding and, you know, making that extra space available for residents.
Yes, to follow up on what they said also, any improvement is good for the village.
Commissioner McClellan? Okay, cool. Um, is there anyone in the public that would like to make any public comment? Anyone online? Okay. You, you could come on, comment on to the microphone, ma'am? I think you should say your name, right?
Name and address.
Uh, Nancy Schroeder, 116 Cocoa Palm Circle in Royal Palm Beach. You're going out the back of the existing building and the side? Is that correct? Okay.
And, and we will be adding landscaping. We'll, we'll be adding landscaping, uh, to the perimeter of the building, particularly towards, towards the rear and where the existing pillar unit is. So there, there will be some additional landscaping, uh, buffer material put in there. Uh, there will be some tree materials that will be taken, uh, but most, in the, in the rear, it's, it's fairly open. So it'll be pretty minimal there on, on the, the, kind of the left side of the building. That's where the, some of the, the trees will be taken, probably more so there.
I think we had someone online.
And same thing, Mr. Chair, if they could announce their name and address once we get them unmuted? Do they have their hand raised?
If the, uh, person that's on our, uh, online, thank you. Um, if you'd like to make a comment on this item, uh, please unmute and state your name and address and share what you will. Okay. Um, I'm gonna close the floor to public comment. And, um, do we have a motion? Do we have to make a motion with the requirements that you added or just make the motion straight?
It's already in the resolution that was provided as part of the backup, so just the motion, uh, as, as is drafted.
Thank you. Uh, anyway.
I'd like to make a, a motion for approval for application 23-038.
Motion made by Commissioner Perrin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations. Thanks. Okay, application number 20-113, SPM Lakeside Landing. The agent WGI Incorporated on behalf of DR Horton, Inc. is requesting major site plan modification approval to remove 106,423 square feet of approved and unbuilt commercial square footage from the existing site plan of record for Waterway Plaza for a property located northwest of the Oka Chevy Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. Middy?
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Will you guys go to the podium and I'll swear you in and you can give your appearances? Anybody who's gonna be speaking? Okay. Yeah, you might as well do it now. We'll do it all at once. Names for the record? Thank you. Thank you. Raise your right hands for me. Do both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, oh, Santos, Josu, Bradford. Bradford, over to you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the applicant is seeking a site plan modification in order to remove a approximately 125,520 square feet of approved but unbuilt commercial square footage and a total of 12.28 plus or minus acres of vacant and partially developed land. Site is located northwest of Oka Chevy Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. The proposed, of the, proposed use is to remove this 1.2, 12.28 acres from Waterway Plaza in order to develop the property for 100 townhomes. This is the area in which the applicant seeks to remove, um, from the overall master plan. In reviewing the application, village staff considered conformity with chapter 26, village's code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for the general commercial zoning district. Overall, the proposed site plan modification meets all the village's requirement for the general commercial zoning district. And partially developed land entrance to be removed meets the requirements of the multifamily residential RM9 zoning district. This item was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at a regular meeting on May 24th, 2022, and was recommended for approval by a vote of four to zero. At the request of the applicant, this item was postponed at the June 16th, 2022 village council meeting in order to revise the site plan and landscape plan to include a five-foot buffer along the west property line, where the proposed plans at the time showed no buffer along the west property line at all. And that goes for all of these applications. So, um, I'm gonna shorten that up to just give you what the vote was at, at that meeting. Staff request of recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding application 20-113 and resolution 22-12. That being said, Chairman, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Martin or Ms. Bolivar, you have a presentation or anything you'd like to say?
I do have a presentation on Ms. Bolivar.
Typically, we handle them separately, so, I mean, you can go over them, maybe it's best on the next application. This one kind of stands on its own because this is the most minimal of the applications, but, um, just remember that they're voted on separately, so try to keep the questions pertinent to the application that work, that the, the commission is currently handling. And just one, if I could, Mr. Chair, while I have the microphone, um, one correction, Bradford. I think you, you said an outdated, um, square footage number. The number in the backup is 106423. Is the square footage being removed? There was a slight adjustment there between the last submittal and this one. Doug, do you want to go through your presentation now or are you gonna wait for the next? Well, it's whatever. Your pleasure.
Sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
And commissioners, just while he's getting ready to do that, remember just ask questions specific to the application that you're on as you go forward. Thank you.
Here's a location map of the property, um, northwest corner of Okeechobee and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, behind the Village Royale Shopping Center. Um, main access to the properties from Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, ingress, egress, there's an existing access currently. Um, we'll also have a egress only onto Okeechobee Boulevard, and it's twelve point two eight acres. A little bit of the history behind this project, um, we originally submitted this project in November of two thousand and nineteen. So we're going on three and a half years. Uh, the comprehensive, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment is in August of two thousand and twenty to change it from commercial to multifamily residential. Rezoning was approved on July twenty-twenty-one, rezoning from CG to RM nine. Um, just to note the current, that, that RM nine would allow for nine dwelling units naked, we're currently requesting eight point one. We then went on with TSR review until May twenty-twenty-two for all seven of these applications before you today. The Planning and Zoning Commission, um, that was the one a year, just about a year ago today, um, that was approved. All seven applications approved unanimously. Following that meeting, and in, in talks with members of the village council. Uh, we, we received some feedback regarding some concerns about buffering on the west side of the project. Um, which is going to be separated by a two-hundred-foot M-one canal. Um, it's across from Madison, the Madison Green community. So because of that feedback, we, we worked with Indian Trails Improvement District and the village Royal Palm Beach staff to try to come up with a solution and find. How we can at least have, um, at least a five-foot buffer in that area, so. We were trying to get Indian Trails Improvement District to reduce the requirement for their twenty-five-foot maintenance easement, which is located on this property. They declined to shrink that easement down five feet, so we amended, we went back and we revised the site plan to basically shift everything five feet. Um, to the east to, to gain that five feet. Following that, um, we went back to TSR review, so staff reviewed those plans. And that brings us here today to this, today's meeting. This is just a summary of all seven applications, I, I won't go through each, but I do have each on the following slides. The major site plan modification, as Bradford mentioned, again, this is the old approved plan for Waterway Plaza. Which included retail, retail office, and motels, two motel structures. This is the southern portion of it down to Okeechobee Boulevard. And we're proposing to remove the hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of unbuilt commercial and replace it with the one hundred feet simple townhome project before you today. Again, staff's recommending approval of this application, which was originally, uh, considered before you last year with a vote of four to nothing. Would you like me to, to continue on with the other applications as well? Or stop here?
I think it might be best since there's so many items, just break it off.
That seems like a good pause part, based on the way you have that presented.
No problem.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, okay, commissioners, uh, Commissioner McCullen, any questions? Um, or comments? Commissioner Parent?
No comments or questions.
I don't have any questions on this item.
I haven't either.
Uh, sir, we'll get to public comment in just a minute, sir, thank you. Commissioner Kouser? Okay, so now I'm gonna open the floor to public comment, but I do have some cards. Um, first is Vern Heatherton, sir, are you here? And your name, ma'am? Adrian Heatherton, um, if you'd come on up to the mic, please.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Heatherington, I live at eleven twenty-two Oakwater Drive. My house backs up to the M-one canal. And we've lived there since Madison Green started, we've been there since two thousand and one. And when we moved there, we knew that, we were told one day this property would be developed. And we thought, well, okay, we know, to, to make a long story short, my husband and I, we moved from Miami to get away from. All the distraction, the, the, the traffic, uh, and, and all of that. So we moved here, we thought Royal Palm Beach is beautiful, it's a beautiful town, beautiful landscaping. Uh, they have very strict codes, which we really appreciate, because we, where we moved from, uh, it was getting out of control. And what we were afraid of happening here is starting to happen. And I see slowly, there's waivers and, and, and variations of this and that. And the one thing that Royal Palm Beach prides itself on is the beautiful landscape. The, the community is beautiful, we have friends who come and the first thing they say is, there's so many trees. And you're all very strict on that, living in Madison Green. We are held to a very high standard of what we can put in, what we can't put in, what we take out, we get, um, permits for this and that. And I got this in the mail and it just took me off to no end. That, I, I don't know how it could be approved where all these things that have been implemented. Have been for the beauty of Royal Palm Beach. So now on this piece of property, uh, which, of course, I know they're gonna build on it. But now we're going to eliminate trees, and now we're going to, uh, not that the parking, uh, is an issue for me. But it will be an issue when people are trying to get their cars in there, I mean, I, I live right there. There, the, the buffer is the canal. And. I know that you, you can't, um, what am I trying to, the word I'm trying to look for here? The tandem parking. The reason why you all discourage it from townhomes is because there's just no room. You're gonna have, it, it's just no room for it, I mean, if you have a single-family house, which I have, we still have problems with it. And it's just the way it is, you're, you're assuming people are gonna have two cars. And that doesn't always happen, and, and. The problem with tandem parking is you have to either make arrangements with the people in the community. That I'm gonna be moving my car and you have to move your car, and, and it's a bit compliment, complicated mess. But I'm really concerned about the landscaping, I mean, I, I, I'm still not quite sure what we are going to face on the canal. I mean, there was the buffer they have there now, I think it's like twenty feet. And they want to reduce it to five feet, but I guess that's been changed now to, though it will be twenty feet, is that correct?
The buffer that they're requesting is five feet.
Right, now. From what I understand, did, uh, this gentleman say that they were going to try to work with the village to get, uh. They were gonna push the whole place back so that they have a larger buffer?
That is a completely separate item, so I would suggest that we keep the conversations to the site plan modification in order to remove this property from the overall site plan.
Okay, well then, I, I totally object to five feet. Totally object to the five feet, uh.
Ma'am, what, what he's saying is that, 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 that's not this item, the landscape waiver is not this item. So you can make additional comment on the other applications that are on the agenda, but the landscaping is not the current item that the board is considering, the commission is considering. They're commission, they're considering just the removal of the previously approved commercial property. So you can come back up on the, on the subsequent landscape comments and make additional comments on those.
Item, item number ten.
That's item number ten on the agenda, landscape waiver.
And seven was the, uh, parking.
Um. Okay, well, basically, everything, everything here, they, they really want to change. Uh, like I said before, um.
Ma'am, if you could conclude your comments, or, public comment is limited to three minutes per agenda item, so if you could conclude your comments on this particular item and you can come back up on subsequent.
My, basically, I just wanted to express my distaste for any type of, of variant for what they're requesting.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I suppose Mr. Heatherington would like to go? Okay, sir, we do have a three-minute limit, so, um, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, while he's coming to the podium, is that working, or, okay, very good, well.
My name's Vern Heatherington, I live at eleven twenty-two Oakwater Drive, uh, Madison Green. Personally, what my wife said, I, I pretty well agree. The big problem that we had is, this is the, probably one of the last wooded areas within Royal Palm Beach. Uh, we sit in our backyard, and I've, we put about fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars into bedding our backyard, so we spend a lot of time out there. I want to tell you that there's quite a few animals that reside in that wooded area. Uh, I've had the pleasure of sitting back and watching bald eagles come in in the springtime and teach their young how to fish out of the canal. Uh, we had brusetta spoonbills that come in there on a regular basis. This property shouldn't have been developed, but I, we all, everybody here knows why it's been, uh, been processed for, uh, development. Uh, the thing that should have been done is probably Royal Palm Beach should have bought the property and made a park out of it or, uh, preserve area out of it. And not sit there and try to cram in a development. Basically, you're talking about replacing a wooded area, cramming a hundred townhomes into that small area. And overall, what you're trying to do is you want to eliminate setbacks for it, and you want to, uh, eliminate the landscaping requirements that have grown with this community. Uh, Royal Palm Beach has got a reputation for being beautiful and, and they, we have a lot of parks in this community. This is not one that's gonna serve as well. And, uh, I think that, are we gonna get an opportunity to address each one of these items as they come down?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll look for public comment for each.
Then I'll hold the rest of my comments until we get to that point.
Very cool, thank you, Mr. Heatherington, appreciate you, sir. Um, is Mr. Fear Tag here? Fire Tag, sorry, sir, come on up, please.
Hi, while I share the Heatherington's concerns that they've raised, my concerns are mainly in items number seven, eight, nine, and ten. So I just want to introduce myself and first of all apologize. I was flying home this afternoon for a flight to land at two fifty at Fort Lauderdale, we got diverted to Fort Myers. And I got home about five minutes before I walked through the door. You deserve respect, I would normally have worn slacks and a, and a dress shirt, my apologies. I'll come back, uh, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Thank you, Mr. Fear Tag, glad you got here safely, sir. Okay, um, is there any other public comment on this item, application number twenty dash one-one-three? Anyone online, Christina? Okay, um, so I'll close the floor to public comments, and, um, is, can I have a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty dash one-one-three, yeses.
Uh, thank you, uh, motion made by Commissioner Parent, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, application number twenty-one dash five-six PP, Lakeside Landings. The agent WGI, Inc. on behalf of DR Horton, Horton, Inc. is requesting a preliminary plat approval. For twelve point two eight plus or minus acres for property located northwest of Okeechobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. Midi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this one is actually not quasi judicial, so Bradford can do his presentation.
Great, thank you, um, as you stated, this is an application for a preliminary plat for a parcel of land totaling twelve point two eight acres. For property located on the northwest corner of Okeechobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The site has a land use designation of multifamily residential and zoning designation of multifamily residential, RM nine. The preliminary plat is consistent with the proposed site plan application. Side was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a meeting at May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. And recommended approval by a vote of four to zero, staff is recommending, um, requesting a recommendation of approval of this application. With that being said, chairman, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir, um, Mr. Martin, would you want to do this part of the presentation for this item?
I don't have a presentation specific to the plat.
Sounds good, sir, thank you, okay, um, commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Markey?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Kouser? Commissioner Parent?
No comments or questions?
Nope, I don't have any for this item either. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment, um, for item number six on the agenda. Anyone in the audience like to talk about item number six? Okay, uh, anyone online, Christina? Okay, um, I'd like to close the floor to public comment, and can I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion, we approve application number twenty-one dash fifty-six.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kouser, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Match, motion passes five zero. Okay, application number twenty-one dash twenty-two PVAR, Lakeside Landings. The agent WGI, Inc. on behalf of DR Horton, Inc. is requesting parking variance approval to allow for variances from. One, section twenty-three to forty-nine B one B, to allow for tandem parking within a multifamily residential development, where the code allows tandem parking only for single-family residences. And two, section twenty-three dash eighteen B three B two, to allow vehicles which are neither prohibited or restricted to park in the front yards and front sets. Setbacks of residential property where only eleven percent of the front yards are landscaped. Where village code prohibits parking in these areas except when the lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yards are landscaped. For property located northwest of the Okeechobee Boulevard, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. Midi, over to you.
Thank you, the applicants have been sworn, so I'll just turn to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this application. Thank you.
Bradford?
Great, thank you. Um, the applicant is requesting a variance from village's code of ordinances at section twenty-three, forty-nine B one, general access. At subparagraph B, in order to allow for the use of tandem parking spaces for a townhouse residential development. Where village code allows for tandem parking to be counted as required parking spaces only for single-family residences. Subparagraph three requires that each parking space shall be accessible without having to drive over or through any other parking spaces except for single-family residents. Where in one space may be located behind the other space, also known as tandem parking spaces, the variances. The variance if approved would allow tandem parking spaces for all one hundred townhomes. The variance requests, it's common request within the townhouse developments, and has been approved in the past. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance from section twenty-three eighteen B three B two. To allow vehicles which are neither prohibited nor restricted to park in the front yard and front setbacks of residential property where only eleven percent of the front yards are landscaped. Where village code prohibits parking in these areas except where the lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yard are landscaped. The section of the village code requires that if a residence is utilizing vehicle parking in the front of the dwelling to meet the code required number of parking spaces, then the front yards must be landscaped with lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yard area. The applicant would like to count the vehicle parking in front of the dwelling to meet the code required number of parking spaces and only provide eleven percent of the front yard is landscaped area. Here's an illustration of the overall site plan, I've included this, uh, so you can begin to get visualized, you can visualize what this project would be looking like. Uh, village code allows for village council in support to grant variances to the parking code when special conditions and circumstances. code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. Little interpretation of the provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The variance granted is the minimum variance. I will make reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved or detrimental of the public welfare. The applicant contends that the subject site is bounded by waterways along multiple boundaries. As a result of these unique circumstances, it is more realistic to develop a residential development consistent with the intent of the Village Code by allowing the tandem parking. Village staff is not in support of this variance because believes that the argument by the applicant that the property is bounded by waterway is not sufficient justification for to approve the variance request. Furthermore, Village staff does not believe that the criteria for granting the variance have been met. This item was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Staff requests a recommendation for denial of application twenty-one twenty-two parking variance and, and variance order B C twenty-two oh four. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Bradford. Um, Mr. Martin, you have a, you have, do you have a section for this?
I do.
Okay, sir.
Okay, the applicant is requiring parking variances from the two sections as mentioned by Bradford. I'll go over these in a little bit more detail. So the first code section that we're requesting a variance from, um, is the tandem parking. So basically, this isn't, this is each individual driveway of your townhouse unit in front of your garage that we're requesting to count as a required parking. This is similar to any residential, single-family. It is permitted in the single-family district, but in Royal Palm Beach, if it's a townhouse product, project, you're not allowed to include that driveway space essentially. Um, we are proposing, uh, they are single-car garages, um, on the end units, we're proposing a twenty-foot wide driveway that could accommodate essentially two cars in the driveway, one car in the garage. The interior units have a sixteen-foot wide driveway, um, that would allow possibly two smaller compact cars with a sixteen-foot width to be parked in the driveway, plus one in the garage. The second, um, so, so just to clarify, there wouldn't, and that's only the individual driveways for each simple townhome. There's not parking elsewhere that's tandem on the property, property. The second requested variance is, um, it's a requirement that basically to be able to count the parking in the front setback area, you have to landscape seventy-five percent of the yard. With a townhouse that, that your lot is eighteen feet wide, once you put your driveway in, you're, there's, it's basically impossible to have seventy-five percent unless you don't have a driveway. Um, so in this case, our smallest percentage is the eleven percent. Um, and we're not requesting, as far as on a lot-by-lot basis, there's still the same amount of landscape provided, it's just not provided all in the front yard, it's provided in other parts of the yard. Again, we feel that we are meeting all the variance criteria for this item based on what I just mentioned for both items. Um, again, and just to note, this was approved unanimously at the prior year. That concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Martin. Um, okay, Commissioners, do we have questions or discussion? Uh, start with Commissioner Kouser.
How many bedrooms are generally?
These are all three bedrooms.
All three bedrooms? And how much, like, recreational area is in this development since there's not as much landscaping?
We have, I believe it's roughly an acre and a half of recreation area. Um, and I could kind of get into that on the, I believe it may be the next application, but we do have several different rec- pods as well as a, um, a clubhouse as you, as you drive into the community. Clubhouse and a pool, and there's trail system throughout. Um, one little pocket park has a picnic area.
Would you like me to answer that question?
Sure, if you.
Okay. Um, I got the nod, I just kind of skipped forward. Um, the applicant is proposing to provide a total of one point three one acres of private recreation on-site for a total of fifty-two percent of the project's recreation obligation. Um, it'll include a pool, cabana, totlot, nature trail, exercise trail with, with exercise equipment, picnic area, and play fields.
And are there going to be, I can, looks like I can see somewhat on this map, additional parking spaces by the recreational area?
Correct. We do have, um, on-street parking in, you know, directly abutting that main rec area with the pool and cabana. I believe there is thirty parking spaces there that are open for parking for the rec area.
We're working on that, sir.
I have no further questions.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Kouser. Uh, Commissioner Markey?
Uh, the only problem driveways are basically the ones that are in, in the middle. As you said, the townhouses on the end will have double-wide. So this plane room for our two cars. So just the, the units that are in the middle will only have, be able to park tandem. So of the hundred, uh, townhouses, how many of those are the middle ones?
It would be approximately eighty? But just to clarify, we're not, we're not requesting, we're requesting to allow them to count for the parking space. We actually are over, our required parking for the project is over the minimum. Um, but there's just a restriction in the code that says that we can't count these spots that are in the driveway outside the garage. So that essentially those end units with the wider driveway, um, are additional parking stalls, but it's two, their code requirement is two spaces per unit. Um, but again, we're, on those interior, we are providing a sixteen-foot wide driveway that, again, it's, it's tight, but it can fit, it can't fit two large SUVs, but if there're smaller cars, that you can fit two cars in those middle driveways, the interior driveways, with, and one in the garage. But we're not, that's not part of our calculations to meet that minimum. I'm just, that's just a potential that I want to throw out there.
Okay.
But yes, the eleven, the, the end units would have a higher percentage. Those, those don't have the eleven percent. We're taking the smallest percentage of landscape area, which is those interior units, and that's the eleven percent, because when you have the driveway, um, together with the eighteen-foot wide lot, you're, you're left with that s- the strip of landscape between driveways.
If that strip was eliminated, could the driveway be a little wide a little bit on both ends?
For the, for the interior you're, you're speaking about? Um, I don't believe, well, that would, that, that would make it zero, that would make it zero percent. Um, for the waiver, so we don't, I don't believe staff would allow a continuous driveway. Usually, there's at least a two-foot separation between driveways. In my experience, I don't know if that's in Royal Palm Beach's code, but we, we also wanted to provide as much landscape as we could, so even in the strips between the driveways, we have shrubs and palms planted between each driveway.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Paul?
Um, the only question I have is, are the HOA docs going to be written to prohibit street parking or, um, limit numbers of cars for the, for the interior units? One of them?
I know that they would be restricted, and I think it's a code requirement that there's no parking on the street. Um, but I can't a hundred percent confirm it's in the HOA docs, but I believe, I believe it is, and I also believe it's a, it's a village requirement.
Hi, this is Maria Boulevard, again. So we do have restrictions in our HOA docs. Thank you for all of that.
That's good. Commissioner Perrin?
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, and concerned with all of those that have appeared that have addressed these various issues. Uh, these are single-family home, townhomes, that, that families that live in there will know whose cars are parked in the driveway, and most, uh, will likely have access to the keys or to the people to ask them to move their car, to move it out of the way. So, um, and we have dressed, addressed tandem parking in several other developments we've had in Royal Palm Beach, which we have addressed and have had no issues or problems related to the tandem parking afterwards. So as long as the residents know who's in their driveway, and it's their parking lot and their parking spot, I, I think that there should be no issue with tandem parking in this situation.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Perrin. Um, you know, I do remember this item from last year. I remember, um, saying it was going to be really tight, right, in, in the location. Um, you know, um, I don't think that the special conditions have been met for, for me, um, but we'll see how the book goes, so. Um, um, I'd like to open these, uh, open the Florida public comment now. Um, um, anyone like to address this, this specific item?
Mr. Chair, if you could ask for address, name and address for each?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, circular, repeat your name and give your address.
Steve Fire Tag, twenty-one oh seven Reston Circle, Royal Palm Beach, uh, twenty-two years, come August. I'm going to be talking generically about the whole concept of all of these variances that are being requested. I saw their rationale for it. I heard everything is harmonious, hunky-dory, but the fact is, the fact is, that it contradicts the existing rules that planning and zoning and the council has put into effect over the years. I'm sure a lot of time has gone into setting up each of those rules. There was a rationale for it, and it was done to protect and, and keep beautiful Royal Palm Beach and the residents. I hope that, uh, these gentlemen who are, to me, very intelligent, at the time they started this project, they knew those rules. They knew them, and now they come back, and they're not asking for a change of one, not two, not three, a dozen. And I, I request that you give that serious thought and not just waive the rules, lest for any rule that you waive, and you say it's not important, and you're allowing them to do that, then you should, at your next meeting, consider changing those rules to what they're asking for here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fire Tag. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? If you'd step up to the mic and, uh, please repeat your name and address, sir.
Keep this very short. Thirty years, law enforcement, ten years as a property manager. So I'm telling you, your parking's going to be a serious problem in there. I don't have a major concern about it, I'm not going to live there, but if you allow this parking as he's got set up, uh, you're going to possibly just take a police officer and put him over there in the property to handle all the complaints. We have this in Madison Green, where we have fistfights out in the street because some of the people, uh, they, they have two, three cars, that's fine. We've got some that got five cars, and they park everywhere in the neighborhood, and uh, it, it's a serious problem. And my concern is really with the next item.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. Um, anyone online? Okay.
Craig Viakowski?
Uh, Mr. Viakowski, um, can you, we know your name, but can you give us your address? And, um, you have three minutes, sir?
Uh, yes, Craig Viakowski, fifteen forty-seven Fiddlewood Court, Royal Palm Beach. Um, I'd just like my comment to be, I'm against, uh, any variance related to the parking situation in that community. Uh, I'm very familiar with multiple townhome communities in the village and, and outside of our village where they have tandem parking. Uh, you've got three-bedroom units, they could have six heartbeats, that's six people. Uh, you could have the potential of having six vehicles at each property. Uh, multiply that times a hundred units, um, you know, that adds up pretty quickly, and, uh, I don't think it would be a good idea for that neighborhood. I'm sure the builder doesn't really care, because once it's built and they're gone, it doesn't really matter, it's left to the people who live there. Um, but I'm against any variance that they're requesting at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, I'll close the Florida public comment, and do we have an, a motion on item number seven?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Uh, motion to approve made by Commissioner Perrin. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner McClellan. All in favor? Uh, all opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion does not pass, uh, fails two to three. Um, I think we have to continue until we have an approved motion, correct?
You need to entertain any other motions on the floor. That's correct.
Do we have another motion or discussion?
Well, my understanding is we have tandem parking elsewhere in the village, and it's never been a problem. Is that true, as far as we really know, or?
You would have to be in those communities observing that. Uh, I, and I have not been in those communities observing that.
Yeah, because I would think it, it wouldn't be a problem. I mean, you know, someone else laid a parking driveway, if you do, you call a tow truck and have them tow it out of there, you know? You know, if your neighbor comes, hey, we're having a party, can we use your spot? Fine, you know? But, um, then if we've never had a problem in other communities where they do allow tandem parking, then I don't see why this one here would be a big problem. I can see where you'd think it, it could be, and, you know, maybe it will be in this particular unit, you know, community, but that's, you know, there's a lot to say right now.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion, Commissioners? Or do we have another motion?
I'll make another motion, please, to pass application number twenty-one dash twenty-two tandem parking.
So, uh, second motion made by Commissioner Perrin. Do we have a second? This is to approve.
Second? Second? Your motion to approve at the first one? So you're making another motion to approve it?
Right, I got the motion to approve it. Second?
You have another motion on the floor to approve, and that's been seconded, so.
We have a second. So this is the second vote. Um, all in favor of approving application number twenty-one dash twenty-two is submitted? All in favor?
All in favor, I am favor.
All opposed? Nay.
If we could, Christina, can you do roll call, please, for this vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't hear everyone's votes.
Certainly. Chairman Adam Miller?
Uh, nay.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey?
Yes.
Commissioner June Perrin?
Agreed, yes.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan?
Yes.
Karen Kouser?
Nay.
Okay, so motion passes three to two this time. Okay, uh, moving on to application.
If I could say something for the, you know, the people in the, the audience, we're only on advisory board here. What we decide is not the final outcome. So I want to go to the elected Commissioners, so they will make the final decision. So don't think that you lost today. This, this is not the end.
Okay, we still have some more items on, 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 on this, uh, Lakeside Landing, so I'd like to move us on to application number, uh, number eight, application number twenty-one dash twenty-three V A R, Lakeside Landings. The agent W G I Inc. on behalf of D R Horton, Inc. is requesting variance approval to allow for variances from section twenty-six eighty dash eighty-three four D to allow for to allow for a zero-foot perimeter landscape setback with adjacent to interior lot lines where village code requires 10 feet, a variance of 10 feet. Two, section 26-83-4C to allow for a 20-foot front setback to right-of-way line where village code requires 25 feet, a variance of 5 feet. Uh, and three, uh, three, section 26-83-4C to allow for a 20-foot side setback to side of the structure where village code requires 30 feet, a variance of 10 feet. And four, section 26-83-4C to allow for a 10-foot rear setback when adjacent to a waterway where village code requires 20 feet, a variance of 10 feet for properly located northwest Okeechobee Boulevard, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, the applicants have been sworn, so I'll just ask for ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Bradford, review?
Great. I'm gonna briefly summarize that. The first variance is a request, a zero-foot perimeter landscape setback. This reduced setback is generally for all townhouse buildings adjacent to a perimeter landscape buffer along the north, east, south, and west property lines. Um, the second is a variance of the front setback to allow for a 20-foot setback instead of the 25-foot code required setback generally for all townhouses. A variance to the side setback to allow 20 feet in lieu of the required 30 feet to adjacent structures, generally for all buildings. Um, a variance to the rear setback to allow 10 feet in lieu of the required 20 feet along the west and north property lines. Village Code, section 2353, allows a village council to grant variances to the, um, to this. Special conditions, and these are the same criteria, so I'll briefly go through the special conditions and circumstances exist. Not results from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. Little interpretation of the provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Uh, this is the minimum variance that will make re, possible reasonable use of the land. It will be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this division. Will not be injurious to the area involved or detrimental to public welfare. The applicant contends that subjects is bounded by waterways along multiple boundaries. Results to unique circumstances are more realistic to develop the residential development consistent with the intent of the village's code by allowing for these variances. Uh, staff is not in support of these variances. Uh, this item was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 24, 2022, and was recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. The staff is recommending denial of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford. Um, Mr. Martin, you have a presentation for this section?
I do. Thank you. So, I'd like to just, sorry, I went back a few slides here. I'd like to just go back to a few slides. Um, that was actually part of another application, but I want to just point out, uh, some of the, the original design, uh, from February 2021 and how the plan has progressed since then. I think it will answer some of the questions about these, uh, the setback, um, and landscape setback regulations that we've now, um, come to request. So, this was the original design, um, originally proposed back in 2021. Uh, we initially had a dry detention area in the middle, not quite about as good of an entity as a lake. Um, the open spaces and we had smaller recreation areas. In addition, upon the entrance to the community, we were originally proposing to keep the existing pavement essentially as the main access. Uh, there was no sidewalk on the south side, only on the north side. Um, and the amenities were very limited. Uh, following that plan, we looked at redesigning to see what could be done. Um, and, and I just want to point out here, you can see that the, that there's spacing, a little bit more spacing between the buildings. Um, however, also, we did not have the, the cul-de-sac on the south end there. Uh, we did have the cul-de-sac on the south end, but per staff comments, we ended up removing that. So, this is the revised plan in April 2022. We've modified the dry detention area to a lake and increased the size. We've added a pathway around that lake. We've increased the size of the main recreation areas, um, and then we've added the trail system throughout the community. Um, there to just to the northwest of the clubhouse where there were townhomes. It's now open space with trails through it, and, um, also, that's one of the areas where we wanted to preserve, uh, some of the native trees on the property. The entrance was narrowed down, uh, actually a suggestion by the village engineer, and narrowed down to 20 feet to allow for landscape on both sides, as well as a sidewalk on the south side. I mentioned the exercise trail, and also just to note that the, the dead-end cul-de-sac at the very southern end was replaced with a, another gate for ingress only that would exit out to Okeechobee Boulevard through the existing gas station. Following that change, um, in September of last year, this is where we came in, and we added a five-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the west property line. Just fast forward here. So, the first variance is the perimeter landscape setback. Essentially, the code requires that if you have your rear yard, your rear property line, there needs to be 10 feet between your rear property line and a perimeter buffer, which essentially, a no-man's land. Typically, it's your rear property line, and then it's the buffer. There's no space in between. Um, that is somewhat unique. Um, that is our first requirement because our, essentially around the perimeters of the site, and it's really only in a couple places where you see on the screen, where the, the yards are, your rear yard, your rear lot line is the edge of that perimeter landscape buffer. The next variance is the side setback. Um, the required is 30 feet. Proposed is 20 feet. This is essentially the spacing between the townhomes that we did have to tighten up a little bit to increase the onsite amenities. Um, 20 feet is not unique. Uh, for instance, the Palm Beach County requires 15 feet. So, typically in Palm Beach County, we're proposing 15 feet. Here, we're proposing 20. Front setback to right-of-way required is 20, 25 feet. We're proposing 20. Again, that's going to be from the garage to the sidewalk, and then there's additional spacing between the sidewalk and the roadway itself. The front setback. The rear setback went adjacent to a water body. So, this is basically your rear yard, um, on these units. A majority are back, is where they're backing up to the main lake in the center of the property. That's where they're gonna have those 10-foot rear yards. And also, adjacent to the M1 canal on the west side, the yards range from 12 feet to 15-foot rear yards. We believe, again, that we've satisfied all the variance criteria. Um, and again, it's based on cha, not only based on changes that we've had to do to the, to the plan itself, but the unique configuration of the site. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Um, commissioners, um, start with Commissioner McClellan. Any questions, comments?
I don't.
Uh, Commissioner Perrin?
Just wanted to ask you, how wide is the canal in the back roughly?
So, the canal easement itself is 200 feet wide. And then, from the property line, um, adjacent to the canal on this property, you have a 25-foot, uh, canal easement. Then we have the 15-foot rear yards of the, of the units.
So, the canal is 25 feet wide? Is that what you're saying?
The canal is 200 feet.
200 feet wide, okay. So, that would be considered a setback and all the, on that side of the, on the side, that side of the development?
Right, it's 200 feet plus there's a, on our side at least, there's a 25-foot maintenance easement. So, it's 200 plus 25 plus a 15-foot rear yard before you would actually get to the townhouse itself.
Okay, and there will be trees, bushes. Are, you're gonna keep some of the trees that are there, or how's that gonna work?
So, we are preserving some. We're preserving, um, I have my notes here, but that, that isn't another slide, but we're preserving 73 specimen of the specimen trees onsite. Um, the trees that we are not able to preserve are going into a, into a fund for the village to plant, um, on other properties. I believe that's roughly half a million dollars. Um, but we are going to have vegetation planted behind the buildings, both in that five-foot buffer. There's trees actually planted 12 feet on center, um, behind each. So, these are, the ones backing up to the canal are almost all six-unit buildings. So, behind those buildings, we originally only had seven canopy trees that were part of just the rear yard landscape. But now that we've added the five-foot buffer, we've actually added 10 more trees directly behind those units. So, we have 17 canopy trees per building. Plus shrub material.
And also, you have that wraparound, the lake that wraps around over there, like, I guess that would be like more, I don't know if you, that's all part of the canal also. So, that's gonna have buff, buffer over there also. You know, you have the canal, and then you have the water that goes in a little bit towards the Royal Palm Beach Boulevard on the north side?
On the north side, there's actually, on the north side where it's, it's backing up the multifamily, we actually don't, there's still trees planted there, but there's not an official buffer called out because of the apartments on the north side. There's no buffer required.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I have no questions. Commissioner Markey?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Kouser? Okay, do we have a, oh, I'm sorry. I almost skipped a spot. Wow, okay. Uh, open the floor to public comments. Anyone in the audience select? Uh, you'll, you'll have to say your name and your address again, sir.
Can we get the picture back up here of the development? I'm not really clear yet, uh, what kind of vegetation barrier they're putting in the, the rear of the, um, townhouses to separate the view from Madison Green to the townhouses. Are we talking about occasional tree, bushes, or whatever?
Um, Bradford?
I'm not, I'm just gonna be very short. I just want to know what you're trying to put, uh, what that is up there.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
So, basically, again, I don't have a, a large block of the landscape plan until after the meeting. Um, but for each one, I can explain. Each one of these are a six, they're six-unit townhome. Directly behind each townhome, we now have a total of 17 canopy trees that are installed at 14 feet tall. We also have shrub plantings around the building and a hedge that's gonna be installed at three feet. That's gonna grow taller. Um, but there's 17 canopy trees. The 10 of those canopy trees that are in the five-foot buffer are planted 12 feet on center. So, as it's mature, it's going to almost completely block the.
No, that's all right. I got trees blocking here. The only question that I'm asking is, it'd be nice if we could include some hedging in there to break up, uh, the view going to the town. This, this exists in almost every, uh, community in Royal Palm Beach. Madison Green had to do a, a berm on the outside. Uh, I think most of the other, uh, projects that were done were done that way. Uh, it's not like I'm asking for raw palm trees be put in, but, uh, uh, we'd like to break that up so that we don't have to sit there in our backyard and look into their backyards.
Thank you, Mr. Heatherington. Uh, Bradford, you want to say something?
Yes, if I may make a suggestion. So, there, there are trees and shrubs that will be placed on the townhouse lots. So, one of the things that we kind of worked out was, um, you know, the trees would be 20, 20 feet off-center, but then we wanted the gap in between there to be filled with more vegetation. But what I was wanting to maybe suggest is, um, the gentleman mentioned hedge material that you see typically, um, with, um, residential developments. Now, our code requires them to maintain the hedge at 36 inches tall, maybe a condition of approval where the, um, the HOA maintains that hedge at six feet. It may be a good starting point if you are considering such approval of this application.
Thank you, Bradford. Um, I think, Ms. Heatherington, I think, would you like to, you have to come up to the mic, and you have to say your name and your address again, please.
Adrian Heatherington, 1122 Oakwater Drive. I just want to clarify, there's not gonna be any type of fencing along the canal, around the canal? Is that what I understand? It's just hedging and trees?
There is no, um, fence material that is part of this site plan. That's not to say that an individual townhouse owner may, you know, probably can do, uh, deed restriction within the HOA that it's a picket fence no higher than four feet. That's what we typically see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. Mr. Firetag, come on up. Again, please state your name and your address again.
Steve Firetag, 2107 Reston Circle, Royal Palm Beach. First couple of words will be repeat, then a couple of new things. A rhetorical question. Are these setbacks, there's four in this, uh, request number eight. Are these setbacks willy-nilly, or were they put in for a specific reason? The first one, 2683-4D, they're asking you to throw out the window. They want to go from 10 feet to zero. Throw it out the window. The fourth one, they're cutting it in half. They knew, they knew what these rules were. To hear that it's harmonious, it's contradictory to what the rules are, your rules. There's a viable solution. A viable solution for the betterment of Royal Palm Beach and the residents is not to rubber stamp these, but to have them build either smaller apartments or fewer apartments. Then they can comply with the, the rationale on why these setbacks were put in place. Very easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Appreciate it. Um, anyone else? Any public comment? Okay, um, anyone online? Okay.
And just, Mr. Chair, Christina, is it anybody online with their hand raised? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Do you have a name or? Oh, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Fajkowski, um, if you could unmute and please state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes, sir.
He's raising his hand, but not unmuting.
What's, what's his name again? Fajkowski?
Craig Fajkowski.
Mr. Fajkowski, are you there, sir? Uh, okay. Okay, um, well, we're just gonna move on. Um, if there's no other public comment, I'll close the floor to public comment. And do we have a motion on application number 21 dash 23?
I'll move approval of application number 2123.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Perrin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. I think that was not.
Mr. Chair, can you call for roll call vote on these, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
You're fine.
Certainly. Chairman Adam Miller?
Uh, nay.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey?
Yes.
Commissioner June Perrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan?
Yes.
Kara Kouser, alternate one?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Um, on to application number 20 dash 16, VAR Lakeside Landing. The agent, WGI Inc., on behalf of DR Horton, Inc., is requesting variance approval to allow for variance from section 22 dash 51B4 to provide 45 feet and 50 feet rights of way, rights of way. Where village code requires sixty feet rights of way, variances of fifteen feet, fifteen and ten feet respectively, for property located northwest of the Okachobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, the applicants have been sworn, but I'll ask the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, many, Bradford?
Great, thank you, sir. The applicant is requesting a variance from village code ordinance section twenty-one fifty-one, variance B, variance four A, in order to allow for forty-five foot and fifty foot wide right-of-ways in lieu of the village code required sixty-foot public right-of-way width. The applicant contends that the sixty-foot right-of-way requirement is typically for public roads and forty-five foot and fifty foot rights of way are standard for private internal roadways. This item was originally considered by the Plains zoning commission on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and was recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Staff is re, is requesting a recommendation of approval be forwarded to village council. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford, uh, Ms. Martin, you have this section as well?
Yes, I very briefly. So just to point out again, we are requesting, uh, starting with the entrance drive off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. It is an existing condition where the, the width at that point is fifty feet, so it's physically, not physically possible to do a sixty-foot wide foot ride, wide right-of-way. Um, then that's consistent throughout the majority of the community. The western north-south roadway is going to be a forty-five foot wide right-of-way, and that's essentially, um, that came about in adding the five-foot buffer that came out of that right-of-way width. Um, to make it forty-five feet, it still has a sidewalk on both sides, and we believe it meets the intent of the code.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, okay, uh, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Kouser?
I just have concerns with reducing it when there's already no parking and now no roadway, and I just see it being very congested.
Commissioner Markey?
I have nothing on this one.
Commissioner Perrin?
I have nothing on this neither.
Commissioner McCollum?
Everything.
I, I, just wait till public comments, sir. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so I'm opening for a public comment now, um, anyone would like, anyone that's here physically would like to make a public comment. Okay, um, is that gentleman still on? Still has his hand up? What was his name again? Fajkowski, Mr. Fajkowski, I think you have to go to the top right and hit on, there's like a, there's a microphone picture, if you click that, it should unmute you, I think. Great, uh, we can hear you, sir, do you wanna state your name and your address and tell us what you think? Mr. Fajkowski? Okay, technology's getting the better of us, okay, um, anyone else online? Okay, thank you, Christina, I'm gonna close the floor to a public comment, um, is there a motion on item number nine of the agenda?
I'll make a motion on application number twenty dash one-one-nine for approval.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Perrin, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner McClellan, I think we're gonna do a roll call vote for this.
Yes, sir.
So Christina?
Chairman Adam Miller?
I'll say nay.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey?
Yes.
Commissioner June Perrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan?
Yes.
Kara Kouser, alternate one?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. Bless you. Um, we'll move on to item number ten, application, uh, thank you, commissioners, we'll move on to application number twenty dash one-fifteen, LW Lakeside Landing. The agent, the agent WGI Inc. on behalf of DR Horton Inc. is requesting landscape waiver approval for three landscape waivers. One from section fifteen dash one thirty-one D to allow for zero foot buffer along the entrance drive where village code requires twenty-five feet. Two from section fifteen dash one thirty-one E to allow for a five-foot buffer along the western property line canal where village code requires fifteen feet. And three from section fifteen dash one thirty-one B to allow for no berms within the buffers where village code requires a three-foot berm. For property located northwest of the Okachobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chair, the applicants, uh, remain sworn, are there any ex parte disclosures from the commission?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford, sir.
Thank you. Um, the applicant is requesting three landscape waivers, waiver from section fifteen one thirty-one D to allow for a zero-foot buffer along the entrance drive where village code requires twenty-five feet. Waiver from section fifteen one thirty-one E to allow for a five-foot buffer along the western property line where village code requires fifteen feet. And waiver from fifteen one thirty-one B to allow for no berms within the buffers where village code requires a three-foot berm. First waiver, um, is along, as I had mentioned, along the entrance drive, and this slide illustrates, um, that entrance drive. And there's areas where, just given the width, there is no way to fit an entrance drive and a landscape buffer. The second waiver is to one fifty, fifteen one thirty-one E to allow for a five-foot buffer along the western property line adjacent to the canal system. In where village code requires fifteen feet, the applicant contends that this, um, uh, due to site constraints prohibit the ability to provide the required buffering. And the third is to eliminate the berm within all buffers on the site. Staff is recommending approval of the three requested landscape waivers, and generally concurs with the applicant's assessment. Plains zoning commission considered the application on May twenty-fourth and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And staff is, again, recommending approval of waivers one, two, and three. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford, uh, Mr. Martin, you have a presentation?
I do, thank you. Okay, so this slide, uh, demonstrates, um, as Bradford was saying, the three requested landscape waivers, the first one, um, as you men, as Bradford mentioned, the twenty-five-foot landscape buffer reduction, um, along the entrance drive off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Due to the existing fifty-foot width, um, there's no room for a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer on either sides. However, we have tried to add additional, as much additional landscape as we could within the right-of-way itself. The other, the next is the fifteen-foot wide landscape buffer along the west property line, it's on the M-one canal, that we're requesting a reduction of ten feet down to five feet. We're not reducing the amount of landscape material, it's simply the width, uh, we feel, um, not only due to the site constraints, but the fact that the M-one canal already is a two-hundred-foot wide canal. Um, that there's already that adequate setback required, and again, we're not reducing the amount of material, it's just the width of the buffer itself. And the final requ, the final variance, I'm sorry, the final waiver would be the zero-foot berm. Um, as you can see, that's on the west, south, and east sides of the property, that's a combination of elements that, why we're asking for that. Um, there's, one is drainage purposes, the other is preservation of existing, uh, native trees, pine trees mostly, um, on several stretches of that, as well as providing swales to ensure that we're not draining onto the adjacent properties. Uh, just to note that adjacent, all property lines adjacent to the existing commercial center, we are providing a twenty-five-foot wide buffer with a six-foot concrete wall, in addition to the landscape material. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, um, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Kouser?
I have no comments or questions.
I have, I have nothing on this one.
I have nothing either, Commissioner Perrin?
I just wanna make a quick comment that I'm happy that you guys have been able to work through all the issues from, I think you said from two thousand nineteen, that we've come this far and all these applications that are presented here. I do also do live in the village for over twenty-one years, and I do like to see that everything is built and maintained in proper manner, and that we try to keep everybody as happy as possible, uh, whatever matters, whether it's cars, buildings, streets, parking lots, or whatever it is. But I'm glad that we've been able to reach this far in all of these issues that we are resolving tonight. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum?
I can't follow that up.
Okay, um, public comment on item number ten, anyone, Mr. Fire Tag, come on up. Again, you have to state your name and your address again, sir.
Steve Fire Tag, twenty-one oh seven Reston Circle, Royal Palm Beach. Three requests here, first on the, uh, going to zero from twenty-five feet. So we've got that rule, it's put in for a reason, time was put in on determining that, and they want that thrown out the window and go to zero. Why? Because there's not enough room. The reason there's not enough room is they have too many apartments that are too large. If they had fewer apartments, smaller apartments, then there would be room. Gentleman from WGI misspoke on the second one, he said they're asking you to go from ten to five feet, that's not true. I'm reading here, it's fifteen feet to five feet. Keep that in mind. Third one, again, with the berm, again, they're asking you to throw that out the window, no berm, not a two-foot berm, not a one-foot berm, not your three-foot berm, no berm, throw it away. The solution, as I mentioned before, is fewer apartments, or smaller apartments, or a combination. And then the rules that were put in place to keep this place nice and satisfy the residents would be satisfied, very easy. Fewer apartments or smaller apartments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fire Tag, any other public comment? Okay, um, is our friend still on?
Yes, Mr. Fajkowski, and I wanna confirm that I am unable to unmute him, it says.
Okay. Oh, we can hear you, Mr. Fajkowski, yay, okay. If you could state your full name and address, sir, and then, uh, we'll give you three minutes from that point.
Thank you, Craig Fajkowski, one-five-four-seven Siddlewood Court, Royal Palm Beach, Florida. Um, you know, here's my thoughts about this particular development is, you're trying to fit ten pounds of garbage into a five-pound bag. Um, it's just too much development to fit on this property. Uh, the developer knows it, village knows it, you as a committee know it, um, and they're asking for every little inch to make it fit. Um, it's the, it's your committee's responsibility to keep these developers in law, to make sure that they understand what the rules are. And every time you give them an inch, they take a mile, and it's time and time and time again. They continue to do it, they knew what the rules were, they continue to ask for a change in the rules, they were granted a variance or a zoning change, which is major, to, uh, redevelop that property from commercial to residential. Uh, it was granted by the village, and now they're at the table begging for more. So I'm asking you, as a committee, and I will be back again with the council, please do not allow them to trample over every possible right we have as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fajkowski, glad we could hear from you. Um, okay, um, uh, close the floor to public comment, and do we have a motion on item number ten?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-one one five.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey, second? Seconded by Commissioner Kouser, all, uh, I'm sorry, we're gonna do roll call vote, Christina, please.
Chairman Adam Miller?
Nay.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey?
Yes.
Commissioner June Perrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan?
Yes.
Kara Kouser?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes four to one. I think this is the last item on the agenda. Um, okay, application number twenty dash one-one-four, SPAAR Lakeside Landing, agent WGI Inc. on behalf of DR Horton Inc., DR Horton Inc. Is requesting a site plan approval and architectural approval for a twelve-point-two-eight acre parcel, parcel to develop a hundred townhouse unit development for property located northwest of the Okachobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chair, the applicant has already been sworn, so I'll just ask for ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford?
Great, thank you. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification and architectural approval for a proposed one-hundred unit townhouse development on a twelve-point-two-eight, um, acres of vacant land and partially developed land, the entrance drive. Uh, here is a site plan that we've seen, uh, many times tonight. I would like to read the recreation requirements because the applicant is proposing to provide, um, half of that, or a little bit more than half of that on-site, and then make a payment in lieu of. So I wanna kind of, um, go through how we came up with, um, the condition of approval for the amount. Uh, we said the section twenty-six seventy-five four G two, village code requires for recreation space of ten acres of recreation space for every one thousand residents. Each dwelling unit generates two and a half residents, per village code, thus based on the proposed one-hundred multi, uh, one-hundred multifamily dwelling units, the recreation required is two and a half acres. The section allows for a credit of private open space, where up to fifty percent of the required recreation can be provided as private open space to the residents of the subdivision. The applicant is proposing to provide a total of one-point-three-one acres of private recreation on-site for a total of fifty-two percent of the project's recreation obligation. The private recreation areas are proposed will include a pool, cabana, tot lot, nature trail, exercise trail with exercise equipment, picnic area, playfields. The applicant is also offering to pay a fee in lieu of dedication of land, uh, to the village for one-point-one-nine acres, or forty-eight percent of the project's recreation obligation. The fee in lieu of dedication of land is, the applicant is proposing a four-hundred-and-thirty-six, four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollar and seventy-five cents. Round it up, we're rounding up, we've got that extra penny. Um, per acre fee in lieu of payment, uh, for the one-point-one-nine acre recreation obligation. I'm sorry, that was the per acre price, the total price for the one-point-one-nine acres is the, is five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. And then the applicant has a tree bank obligation where they're, um, removing specimen trees, and that's, that tree bank, um, obligation is six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. And here is an illustration of the landscape plan. Here is a illustration of the architecture of these buildings, which even this has come a long way since this project first started. Here would be the sign that the applicant is proposing. I believe this is the clubhouse. Village staff consider conformity with chapter twenty-six of village code ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for the multifamily residential zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, and maximum building height, aside from the variances and the waiver requests that have been, um, before this. of the waiver requests that have been, um, before this commission earlier this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two recommended approval by a vote of four to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. With that being said, councilman, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Bradford. Uh, Mr. Martin, final presentation, sir?
Yes, another brief presentation, please. So basically, on, on all the prior, um, applications that I've reviewed, um, I have touched on the elements of the site plan, so there's just some additional, um, list of considerations I'd like to show. So the site plan as proposed in comparison to the commercial, it's going to be a seventy-seven percent reduction in the amount of traffic generated. Um, we feel we've addressed the, the concerns of the townhomes adjacent to the commercial uses, um, with appropriate buffering, including the six foot wall. We also believe this is an ideal transition from the zero lot line homes to the west, and the commercial to the east, and the apartments to the north. As Bradford mentioned, we are, um, contributing to the tree bank based on the specimen trees that we cannot preserve on the site in the amount of six hundred, six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, and that goes towards planting trees, um, on any village property. Also to note that we have preserved seventy-three specimen trees onsite, which a specimen tree is anything over a ten inch DBH, and in addition, there's seventy-one replacement trees planted onsite. Um, those trees mentioned here are all pine trees. In addition to the, in addition to those specimen trees, we're also relocating a hundred and nine palms on the property and preserving thirty-nine. So that's a hundred and forty-eight palms that will be preserved. Also, just wanna note that the school district's recommendation here, um, the school district has stated that there will be no negative impact on the school district, school district of Palm Beach County Public School System. Here again is a couple renderings, uh, that Bradford also shared with you. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, Commissioners? Commissioner McClellan?
Uh, no comments.
Commissioner Perrin?
I'm sorry, I gotta say this. But we are a tree city, and we love our bushes, and we love our trees, and we love our beautification. And like I said, I've been here twenty-one years, and I've seen all these changes. I'm very happy that you're making all this donation to the village tree bank contribution. I'm glad that you're preserving those other trees because all of this is all very important to all of us that live here in Royal Palm Beach, and it's a priority. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Perrin. Commissioner Kouser?
You know, our job in this commission is definitely to make sure that they're going by village code. That code, though, also has room for variances, and that's why we allow for that in the code. Um, and I think, you know, tonight, they, they did a job, a good job of working with, with the village to meet those, um, regulations. And though, you know, part of me is conflicted because we do love the trees, and seeing this is a big, you know, um, wooded area, um, but, you know, the property owner is still doing a great job of making it a use, and we know with right now with the hu, housing crisis and everything, it's really good to see more development in the city and bringing more residents to the city, so.
Commissioner Kouser, Commissioner Markey?
All I can say is, you know, I'd rather see this be a residential area than a commercial area. You know, you're concerned about your view, but you could be looking at warehouses instead of houses, you know, where you've got, you know. Yeah, but, you know, you got a four-story building, it's not as hard, you know, to hide it. So, I don't know, that's all I'd say on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Markey. I'd like to thank Mr. Martin for his presentations today. And, um, you know, um, I do wanna let the public know, uh, echo Commissioner Markey from earlier, you know, um, this, these items will move over to village council eventually, so when they do, if you have any objections, it goes to them. Okay, um, uh, now I'd like to open the floor to public comments. Mr. Firetag, come on up, sir.
Steve Firetag, twenty-one oh seven Reston Circle, Royal Palm Beach. So here we are, number eleven. This is what it boils down to, that site plan approval for one hundred townhomes. And by the way, I misspoke earlier. When I was talking about the variances, I was using the term rules. And as I'm sitting there reading, they're not rules, they're requirements, requirements. And we've got a whole long list of them. And what we're trying to do, tied in with what, uh, Mr. Viakowski was saying earlier, you're taking, or they're taking, a size six foot and squeezing it into a size six shoe. This is the opportunity that this body has to reject this number eleven and ask them to come back with a different plan, with either fewer units or smaller units. And this way, we can preserve many of the requirements, the requirements that the village has set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Firetag.
One more thing, I got another minute and a half. I'm so glad to hear that they're paying six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and I'll try and wipe the sarcasm off my mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Firetag. Uh, any other public comment? Is our friend online?
Yes, we have Mr. Viakowski raising his hand. Um, again, needs to unmute.
Mr. Viakowski, if you could unmute, sir. We'd like to hear what you have to say.
Hi, Craig Viakowski, fifteen forty-seven Fiddlewood Court, Royal Palm Beach. Um, here's a question for the committee. The developer is asking you for all kinds of approvals and variances so that they can shoehorn this development on their property. Why doesn't the council go back to the developer and say, what will you do to make your development fit into the rules and requirements established by the village of Royal Palm Beach? That's where we should be talking, not the other way around. You know, i- it just seems like it's a, you know, there's no give and take. It's a take, take, take. So, you know, that, that's really all I have to say. I know it's gonna get approved. There's nothing we can do about it. We can complain all we want. Um, it's just the way things work, and, and we understand, but at least we can voice our opinion and let you know how we feel. And, uh, sad that it happens to be this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viakowski. Um, I'd like to close the floor to public comment. Um, we have a motion made on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve application number twenty dash one one four.
Motion made by Commissioner Perrin, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kouser. Uh, Christina, can you do a roll call count, please?
Chairman Adam Miller.
Uh, nay.
Vice Chairman Philip Markey.
Yes.
Commissioner June Perrin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan.
Yes.
Kara Kouser?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Uh, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, our next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, seven P.M. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some of them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is closed. Don't go anywhere. We have one more meeting after this. It's afraid that Commissioner Perrin was gonna jump up and run out of here. Okay, um, I'd like to call to order the, uh, May twenty-third meeting of the local planning agency. It's, it's not seven P.M., at eight fifty-five P.M. How about that? Did we do the pledge of allegiance again with this one? I don't think.
You, you don't have to, Mr. Chair, and you can also let the record reflect that the same members are on the dials.
If I could do that, please, thank you. Okay, do we have an approval of meeting, uh, the minutes from the last LPA meeting?
Motion approved minutes from the February twenty-eighth, uh, local planning agency meeting.
Made by Kouser, seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That was a aye.
Okay.
That was late.
The minute is past five zero. Okay, the only item for discussion in the agenda is ordinance number one thousand thirty-three, propose to amend the village code of ordinances as section twenty-three dash sixteen, manner of parking vehicles upon streets, public rights of way, publicly owned parking spaces, vacant lots, and swales penalties to clarify, penalties to clarify, penalties to clarify the swale parking restrictions within the village and add additional regulations to address parking of vehicles on publicly owned property. Sorry, I think it's past that time.
Sorry about that. That, that's a challenging ordinance title, so that always reads a little bit weird. But this should look very familiar to you. This was before you, a couple of months ago. It actually went to first reading at the village council. It's back before you because after first reading, staff identified that a previous, um, restriction on page two of the ordinance, um, for parking on these swales, there was a deletion to the previous ordinance, which would have allowed people to keep their cars on their own personal properties in the swale and not ever move them. So that twenty-four hour restriction has been built back into the code. It was what was in the code originally, so it was, determined that we needed to keep that in there so that, um, vehicles were turning over and not killing, killing the yard and killing the grass. So that's what's, that's really the only substantive change that's before you. So, um, with that, I'll answer any questions that you have on this ordinance.
Commissioners? I, I do have a comment, uh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I will open the floor to public comment. Um, I do have a public, a comment card from Carlos Morales, but I don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone online? Christina? No, not even our friend, Mr. Viakowski? No, he's still here. Okay. Okay.
No hands, okay.
Well, Mr. Morales?
Does, does the card say anything, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
No, it doesn't say for my, it just, the only comment is parking in La Mancha.
Okay.
There's no other comment on the card, unfortunately. So I will close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to approve application.
Ten thirty-three. Motion made by Commissioner Perrin, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, 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 aye.
You're messing me up. Item passes five to zero. Um, the next meeting of the LPA is Tuesday, June twenty-seventh. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Awesome. We are adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.